Good afternoon, everyone. We'll go ahead and call this meeting into order if you could stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, is there any public comment? Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll move on to the verification of the posted agenda, please.
Pam Moore, for the record, the agenda was posted on October 10th between the hours of 1:00 and 5:00 at the locations listed on the agenda in accordance with statutes.
Thank you, Pam. Can I get a motion to approve this agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve this agenda as revised.
Mr. Chairman, a second motion.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Can I get a motion for the minutes of the meeting held on August 20th, 2025?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion due to staff shortage in the clerk treasurer's office caused delays for the completion of the minutes and wish to approve the minutes of the meeting held on August 20th, 2025 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. We'll jump to our first appointment, consideration and possible action, updates on current activities, plans, or actions related to the Bureau of Land Management, Carson City District. And the floor is all yours.
Mark Mazza, Assistant Field Manager, Bureau of Land Management. If we can go to the next slide. Okay, BLM updates for this month. So, the first one regarding the Sand Canyon project. Let me get on the right page here. So I know there's been several discussions regarding rights aways and maintenance agreements. Right now, this project is in the baseline study stage for the BLM. Moving down to the second bullet there, we have the B-16 final grazing decisions, which were sent out. They were in an appeal period until October 10th, and we're going to be moving to the next steps of those. We're waiting a few more days to see if anything is still in the mail. Third bullet there, there's no change on the BLM and Bureau of Reclamation interagency agreement, and we're also still prioritizing those B-16 affected grazing permits for the full renewal. Next slide. I don't have an update this time on the checkerboard resolution for State Route 361. I know that one is also in the baseline stage. They're conducting the baseline surveys for wildlife, for birds, or they're making plans to collect that at the appropriate time period. For the Great Basin Pipeline relocation, that's a project that we're cooperating agency on with FERC. So there's ongoing bimonthly meetings where that project's discussed, and BLM participates as needed. Next slide. Okay, so this is our prescribed grazing project. It's a first-of-its-kind grazing project implemented under the Great Basin Targeted Grazing and Prescribed Grazing Fuels Reduction EA, which came out, I think, two years ago. This is the first project being implemented under that EA, and we're working with an operator, Pleasant Valley Livestock, out by East Gate Ranch. And the expected grazing period was on October 1st. The item that we're waiting on right now is for a fence, which is supposed to be constructed before the grazing period begins. The operator's constructing it right now, and as soon as we hear that he's completed with that, we'll be issuing a permit and a letter of authorization to take advantage of the high loading of annual grasses there for cheat grass and do some fire reduction there. As far as the full renewals, we do have some projects in Mineral County that are going to be working on the next steps. We're sending out some early engagement letters for some vacant allotments, which are down in the very south end of Mineral County, and hoping to make some progress on those. We recently completed a land health assessment and a land health evaluation for those projects. So we'll be sending out those early engagement letters, hoping to get some feedback on what the next steps would be on those allotments. We can go to the next slide. There we go. Yeah, it's the sage grouse one. Okay, I'm leaving this on there because although there hasn't been a change, the original date was October 2025 for this Nevada-specific Record of Decision regarding another sage grouse land use plan amendment. There's some links in there that can be followed, so it breaks out the different multiple uses that BLM permits and how those would relate in sage grouse habitat when they are applied for within those habitat types. So hopefully later this month, they'll continue to move forward on that with the Record of Decision. And we can go to the wild horse slide. Thank you. So we got our corrected flight numbers back. So when they correct them, they correct them for visibility that occurred on that date that they were flown, what the terrain was like as far as steepness, and also the ground cover, if it was forested or if it was open. And then they use those statistics to correct how many horses or burrows were likely undercounted during the census. It took a lot longer for us to get those numbers back this year, but these numbers here from our flights in March are what the corrected numbers were. So we had 653 horses on the Pilot Mountain herd, which has an appropriate management level, a high end of 415. For the Marietta herd, which is a burrow herd in Mineral County, there are 168 burrows. There's supposed to be a maximum of 104, and we did recently gather that herd area in the last few years. For the Pine Nuts, 283 horses. It has an appropriate management level of 179. For the Garfield Flat herd, which is also in Mineral County, 206 horses with an appropriate management level of 125. And for the Wasak herd, which we flew this year, there were 128 horses. That one has an appropriate management level of 165, meaning that it's still under that cap. So that was the only one that we flew this year, which is under the cap. Updates regarding the adoption on October 25th. There's going to be 20 saddle-trained horses at the Northern Nevada Correctional Center in Carson City available for adoption. Next slide. There's not too many updates regarding ongoing geothermal projects. So there was the baseline's requirement document provided with Fish and Wildlife Service and the Navy and BLM provided to the proponent, which is ORMAT. That happened about a month or two ago, and we're still waiting to hear back on those. As far as the Diamond Flat project, that's the one that was approved under emergency permitting, under alternative arrangements. So that's really in an implementation phase right now, and that was done in June. And then we can go to this piece of the geothermal. There is some movement. So on the 20th, which is coming up soon, there'll be the finding of no significant impact and the decision record posted on BLMZ planning page, which has these leases in the Carson Desert, and those are geothermal leases being sold. They will be available at that time, once they're leased for resource confirmation, and then they can move on to production, too. And if we can move on. Thank you. Okay, not as many projects in Churchill County as there are in Mineral County right now, but there are a few notable ones. So the Cosmo Lithium Exploration Project, we met with the proponent last week again. They're going over their conceptual plan. It's a first-of-its-kind lithium exploration project being proposed up there in Dixie Valley. And then we have the Bell Mountain Mine. This is a project which we're still waiting on final design. It's in a pre-construction phase. That one, the decision record was issued in 2020, and then it kind of came to a standstill for a little bit. So likely soon, it would be rounding the next corner. And then the Cosmo Sagittarius Exploration. So that's different from the Cosmo Lithium Exploration in that it's under the notice level arrangement, which allows up to five acres of disturbance for exploration regarding locatable minerals, and that is also in Dixie Valley. Next slide. So we completed the Legacy Gold Rush OHV race. That was October 9th through the 12th. It was a success. They had about 100 applicants, or not applicants, they had 100 racers. Right now, they're in the roads repair stage for that. The Columbus Day at Sand Mountain was less than expected, likely due to the weather. Wasn't the best weather that weekend, and now the staff is preparing for Halloween, which is the biggest weekend out there in Sand Mountain, and making sure they have plans to be adequately staffed for that holiday. Green Lake North, that's a major transmission project running along the north end of Nevada. Right now, it's in a protest resolution stage. The BLM office that's working through that protest resolution is the headquarters office for BLM, because that's a multi-district project encompassing several different offices. And I don't have any updates on the War Canyon Right-Away EA, and so that's the end of my presentation. There any questions?
Thank you. Any questions or comments from board or staff?
I have a couple of questions. And the Pleasant Valley, is that just because that's the first time it's ever been grazed? Is that's what makes it like the special part about it or anything?
This project is different than our normal grazing permit authorizations in that normally there's an existing permit, which you can get preference to and then apply under the existing permit. This one is a special permit designed to take advantage of annual cheat grass. So it has to meet certain specifications as far as like the land type and when it would be grazed, how much fuel is there, and then what fuel load they're going to reduce down to. And it just requires a lot of monitoring, and it's a different type of permitting authority than what we normally do under traditional grazing permits.
Okay. And then on the law-haunted herd management, what's the concern with the appeal? Someone filed an appeal on there? What's the concern?
There weren't any appeals. It was that October 10th was the end of the appeal stage. There's an appeal stage for 30 days, which follows the 15-day protest period. So at first, we do the proposed decision, which we did receive the protest from Churchill County on, and then it moves into an appeal stage for 30 days before we can issue the final decision and permits, or implement the final decision and permits.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you for your time. Appointment 7B, consideration and possible action, approval of an internal or external compensation study of all regular county employee positions. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Joe Sanford, for the record. I'm going to do my very best Alan Calt impression today. I made a PowerPoint for you all, so can you bring that up for me, Pam? So while she gets out, I'll just give a little background. At our last meeting about a month ago, Manager Spross had mentioned that there had been some desires expressed by this board to have a compensation done, a compensation study done for all employees in the county, and that we'd present you your options at some time this month. And so what I want to go over today is sort of the background, the purpose and need of a compensation study, whether we want to do an external or an internal evaluation. And then if you do decide to go with an internal evaluation, what that would look like from HR's end. So go ahead, next slide. All right. So it's kind of three main functions of doing this study, which is to improve recruitment, to ensure retention, and to ensure reciprocity from our current employees to know that they are being compensated fairly and that they are properly giving all of their hard work and effort to the county. So, one more, there we go. So as you all know right now, it's a competitive landfill in getting good quality applicants to come to Churchill County and want to work here for a long time. You know, some of our benefits, specifically PERS, used to be a much greater attraction than it is now. And almost every employee that we get that's outside the area or isn't already working for the county, you know, they find us online. And when they look online, the first thing they see is the salary. And we're right next to every other job that's in the area also looking at their salary. And so that's the very first thing that they see, and having a competitive salary ensures that they will continue to move forward with our process and consider putting applications in here. Next slide. So retention. So right now Churchill County has an absolutely fantastic group of employees. We are very fortunate to have every single employee that we have. And when one of those employees leaves us, it can be a major impact. You know, some exodus is always standard, and it's expected, but when someone leaves specifically to go get more money at a competitor, that is a harm to morale and potentially creates cascade effects where, you know, an employee in that same position starts looking at the same potential competitor. And the next slide. And so, you know, Churchill County is a large employer, but we do not have, I guess, any particular department that is large. We cover a lot of different areas, and so employees inside Churchill County, they have, you know, some limited ability for advancement, but not always. It's very rarely able to be linked directly to productivity. We're not in a position where, you know, we can say, oh, you know, employee, you've done a great job this year, here's a bonus, or here's, you know, a path for you to get a promotion. Sometimes there's abilities to do that, but sometimes there isn't. And so ensuring that each job is compensated at the amount that it needs to be ensures that we can have those employees continue to work for us as diligently as they do. So I want to talk a little bit about whether we should do an external or an internal study. I don't have, I don't want to give any opinion about which one, whichever the board decides is what we will do. So, an external study, what we've done is we've reached out to each company that I know of in Nevada that has done studies recently. PayPoint HR did the study for Elko County and Nye County. Baker Tilly just did one for Douglas County, and Corn Ferry did one for Washoe County in the last three years. We reached out to them a couple of weeks ago. Some had time to put a full proposal together. Others were only able to give us their cost and timeline. PayPoint HR gave us a quote for $52,750. They expected to have a timeline of February to March for full completion of the study with usable numbers sometime in February. Baker Tilly gave us a quote for $53,000. They were going to be completed in February, but would have usable numbers by the end of January. And then Corn Ferry, they gave us a cost of $92,000 with a timed complete of 12 weeks. They did also give us a salary structure option of $25,000. That, what that was, was not exactly clear from their original proposal. We asked for some updated information, and they responded this morning, so I don't have time to get it in your packet today. But that salary structure option was about determining the, what grades are appropriate, not for specific positions, but whether or not we should continue to have grade 1 through 96, and instead move that to be compressed or expanded, how many steps should be in grades, and things like that. And so that wasn't going to be specific to market analysis, it was more about the actual pay structure itself. Alternatively, we can do an internal study. That would mean that HR would be completing the study. So I'll just pause and I guess give some of the known pros and cons for both. The, you know, the pros to an external investigation or external study are, I mean, on the one hand, you have people who do this for a living, which is always good. It removes any perceived bias that may exist by having an internal study. But there's some cons as well. I mean, obviously, the cost is one, but there's also the fact that there's some limited ability to have significant engagement with an external partner. They're going to have a fixed price, like what we've seen, which means they have allocated a certain amount of time to interacting with us and getting our input and information, and anything that's beyond that isn't going to be within their fixed fee study. And so, whereas if we had an internal investigation, we're going to have significantly more control, and by we, I mean you as the board, will have significantly more control on the output, right? If we need more time, you'll have the ability to add, say, look, I need you to do more. If it's something where you think departments need more input, there's time for that. On the other hand, there's the perceived bias issue, and there's also the fact that ultimately HR has other functions. We do, you know, job recruitment, job application posting, everything that HR currently does. And this would take time away from that. A little later, I have a sort of a breakdown of the expected time rate, but it'd be about 400 hours is my expectation to have this completed, and that would be time spent on other tasks. So the first thing to do when looking at an internal study and an external study as well, is to identify our market competitors. Our most one-to-one examples are counties, and so that's why mostly counties have been listed. Douglas County, Nye County, Lyon County, Story County, Carson City, which is also half a county, Humboldt County, Elko County, and Washoe County. You'll see that there's a 15% cap next to Washoe County. And the basis for that is, I mean, if we look at it in a lot of ways, Washoe County is not a good comparator to us. They have a significantly larger population, positions that have management responsibilities or fiscal responsibilities, and that, in those departments have significantly more people to manage, significantly higher budgets, may have significant alternative responsibilities. Historically, we've done some things with Washoe County, like taken a position below whatever the comparable position is. And while I think that that may have worked before, frankly, I think it creates some of its own problems. For example, if you have a position that's currently a manager, but there isn't a level below that that's also a manager, you know, if we take a comparable position, we might take significant job responsibilities that our person is doing here and wouldn't be in a comparable position for Washoe. And so the intention I would have would be to set a cap for Washoe County at 15% over what our current salary is. In that position, we would go one-to-one. It'd be enough to say, look, if there's a significant difference in these positions, up to 15%, that would be included. If it's more than that, it would be likely due to potential responsibilities that exist by virtue of their size and not by virtue of the duties. Obviously, if we have significant outliers or something in a particular position where we see that that doesn't make sense, we can evaluate it, but that would be my expectation for most positions. Our also competitors are the City of Fallon and the City of Fernley. Specifically, the City of Fallon is our most appropriate local government competitor. We don't have exactly the same positions, and so some positions will not have exact one-to-one comparators, but they do have our most competition for the same pool of applicants. And then we also use the state of Nevada. They are obviously present all across the state and are the largest employer for the So here's how the study would generally go. Phase one would be a data gathering function. We would get job descriptions, pay tables, and filled positions from our competitors. And the purpose of this is not only do we want job descriptions so that we can compare with our current job descriptions and their current pay table, but we also want to know how many of those positions are filled and when were those positions filled. And this will let us know, just like us, we have several positions on the books that nobody fills and haven't been filled for many years. And so those positions may not be true, accurate comparators, because no one has been filling those positions for some time. Then we will be providing our current job descriptions for all employees to the current department heads. This is the chance for every department to come in and give input and information into what their personnel do. When we do these comparisons and this analysis, we will be going on a job description-to-job description basis. And so if your job description doesn't actually match what your employee does, I mean, not only is that bad for just general practice, but it'll be very hard to find accurate comparisons. And so we will need to have current department heads do a good job ensuring that what their employee does matches those job descriptions. And then finally, we'll be compiling an organization chart for all of our departments. We currently have some of this, but having a full delineated chart to ensure that we capture those positions that are in supervisory positions, that may not otherwise be known as supervisors, or those that do not have supervisor duties that may have it in other So phase two, this is our competitive comparison. And so what we'll be doing is we'll be going and finding benchmark positions as compared to our current positions. So for example, we might say, look for an assessor 1 in Douglas as an assessor 1 in Churchill County versus an assessor 1 in Washoe, et cetera. We'll be looking at each of those job descriptions and ensuring that they match, that they have similar duties and similar obligations. And then the intention is to apply what I'm going to call a confidence score to each of those, not especially for those competitors that don't have exact one-to-one position comparisons with us. And the intention there is to establish, you know, if we pick, say, the clerk treasurer here versus, say, a clerk treasurer at the city, do they actually have similar duties? Are they different? What are those differences, and how comparable are they? By assigning, say, a confidence score, we can say, look, if we have a position or a comparison where that may have been the best comparison for City of Fallon or Story County, but it really isn't all that accurate, we'll know that perhaps that position isn't something we should include in our data. Then we'll be calculating an average compensation for all the benchmark positions, and the intention is to say, every position that has high confidence, eight to 10, will be included. And then if we have a position that we don't have very good comparators for, we'll just either take the top eight and then do an individual analysis of that position. Then phase three, this is validation, and I hope that this is something that can, I think, set some of the concerns that I've heard about this from past experiences to rest. So when we complete this evaluation, we'll be sending each department or an official the current position, our calculated average, the benchmarks that we use to determine that evaluation. And then we're going to ask for input and comment, because, you know, I understand that, you know, the people here on the boots-on-the-ground are the people who know their positions the best, and they need to have the ability to provide input to know that, you know, this evaluation is being done correctly. Now, I can't say that we'll always agree on what that is, but we'll certainly have a chance for input. And then positions with a calculated average, say 10% more than what our expected change would be. So if across our whole county, we say we move positions 4%, then we would say anything more than 14% or lower than a 6% reduction, we're going to go back through those, and we're going to say, look, is this truly being done correctly? You know, is this something that needs a second look to make sure that every aspect of that was considered on whether those benchmarks were the correct benchmarks, and whether or not the position that we currently have is being adequately described in its job description, because we may have either not put enough information or put too much information in that job description. So this is the timeline that I'd expect to complete it. The data gathering phase would, I mean, if it starts today, we'd probably start earlier, but somewhere around a month to gather all of the information, both from our competitors as well as from our department heads related to job descriptions. I expect that to be about 100 hours. And then we would take approximately two months, 240 hours, to do all of the actual comparisons between Churchill County and all of the various competitors, establish the averages, and make determinations on what that is going to look like for our county. And then phase three, the validation stage, would be roughly a month. I expected to have relatively low number of hours, but obviously that can be increased depending on the amount of validation that needs to be done. This will hopefully align with our budget initiatives, so we will have valid information ready to be included in our tentative budget in February, as well as our final budget in May, with the effective date sometime July 1st, 2026. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Any questions, comments, concerns from board or staff?
I think 400 hours is...
I think 400 hours is a bold prediction, especially when I look through these, and, you know, I think the one was 422 hours with the whole team of people that do it all the time. My concern is internally, time. We look at our website, we have a fair amount of positions open. Balancing that, you brought up the other concerns. You know, when a company comes in, an external company comes in, they look at positions they have no ties to a person in that position. And it's just a little bit human nature. Oh, man, we go trick-or-treating together every year. We have football parties. You know, it's just human nature. My only concern is how we're going to pay for this. I'm all for doing it externally. I think you can tell that for reasons stated. And that's not a bad thing, right? We're a team in this county. And when you know somebody personally, bias may or may not come in. And I'm not accusing anybody of going to be biased, but it's just what it could appear. And I think we can avoid a lot of issues having it done externally, and that's how I feel about it. How are we going to pay for it? We're going to have to put our heads together in how to figure out how to pay for it.
Prior to any discussion, I'll disclose that my daughter is an employee of Baker Tilly in another state. I have confirmed that she has no financial gain, negative or positive, to her employment, so it will not affect my decision. I agree with Commissioner Hyde on the external survey. My largest concern of an internal survey is the time. You still cost something. Your department costs something. I've determined in my calculations, your department at 400 hours is $55,000 worth of cost. Now, we have loss of time of production of the 400 hours that you could be doing your normal stuff, your salary, and you have requirements. So that may not work in your favor. Right? So that's my largest concern, is if we have to go backwards and you have to work more hours, you know, there's a value on the extra hours. So now, the county, you know, when I say I find it to be $55,000, it might be more costing the county $80,000 to do it internally, you know, because of the value of the loss of time, right, and the work. So that's my largest concern with the Churchill County. I'm not for sure that I like even comparing the city and the city of Fernley in the state, because they don't really have positions that line up with the county. That's another concern. So that's the concerns I have of doing it internally. Externally, Corn Ferry, they gave a one-page synopsis of what they want to do. Didn't really tell me a whole lot. Baker Tilly, sort of the same thing. They provided a, you know, a presentation they gave to Douglas County. And it was readable, understandable, but it wasn't impressive. It wasn't like, I don't know. And then you have PayPoint, who I thought explained everything so well that we can hold them accountable for almost every action that needs to be taken and put a timeline to that, to where we would accomplish what we really want to accomplish to get what we need. And I think as long as the staff buys in, which I don't know why they wouldn't, because they're the ones who really want this, to get you the information in a timely manner so you could pass it on to the contractor, you know. PayPoint has, in their resume, I didn't really count them, but there's more than 50 new municipalities that they've done for. They've worked for four entities in the state of Nevada since 2021. I reached out to Elko, had a great conversation with them, and they told me I could share this information. I asked, give me a scale of 1 to 10 with PayPoint. They said we'll give them an eight, and they were more in-depth than any other company they've ever dealt with. So I thought that was a plus. And then I was able to reach out to Eureka County and scale of 1 to 10. They said they gave them a nine-plus and exceeded all their expectations that they could even imagine that they would have had during a comp study. So that's two references. I couldn't get contact with the other, with Nye County, which is Tonopah, and I could not make contact with him. But anyway, I find that their proposal is quite impressive, and I think it's meeting the needs that we need to meet to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish, to move the county forward. So that's my take on this position, and I hugely recommend an external study.
Sounds like we're all in agreeance. On the note of Nye County, I was able to get ahold of one of the prior commissioners from there that dealt with PayPoint, and she had nothing but a great thing to say about them. So I think we're all in agreeance for an external study. What is everyone's thoughts on? I'm more leaning towards PayPoint, just going off of the words of...
For sure.
Okay.
And I would add this, you know, I agree with Commissioner Blakely. Fallon is a unique community, you know. It's a place you want to, you need to want to be. Any of these roles, you need to want to be here. So comparing us with Washoe County, state of Nevada, are those really the employees that are going to stay here if they're comparing just Washoe County versus Churchill County? When I was in human resources at the phone company, you know, the, a lot of times, the husband or wife that was looking at a position, typically the husband would be fine with Churchill County, and the wife is a long ways from shopping. So they would fall off. Well, they're going to fall off eventually, so do you really want to put the time and effort into that? So there's some comparisons that I believe in my own mind that we could take off of that. I agree with you. I love comparing with Humboldt, Douglas, similar counties, to get a real feel for where we're at competitively. So. But I agree, PayPoint, I had the same thoughts, went through the proposals. Corn Ferry is easy, because it was just a letter and a number they're going to charge. It seemed to me like they were, hey, let's throw out a big number, and if they go with us, great. Not going to happen. So I'm ready.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board or staff?
Mr. Chair, Chris Pross for the record. I feel it's prudent to at least say this, and trust me, aside from probably Joe, there's probably nobody in this room that would want this to be external more than me. Having sat in that position, I know what it takes from a day-to-day operation standpoint. So to me, it's just, it's one way or the other. But I just wanted to bring up that when we do this with an external company, the biggest concern I think that most people have is that communication from the external to our departments to get that information. HR is going to be involved in this to some degree anyway, if this is going to be external, but I would suggest that that communication, that HR be a facilitator and have those discussions within the departments to get that information and kind of be the liaison to get that information back and kind of be that point of contact in between, so that the departments feel like the communication is taking place and they're being heard, and that information is being exchanged back and forth, so that we don't solely rely on a flat-fee proposal, and it kind of is what it is, that we can maintain that communication.
I'd just like to add that I just want to make sure that HR would be involved in all the communications correct, and that no department, no supervisor, no appointed department head or elected department head is restricted to talk to these people. Like, if these people want to talk to those people, they need to be allowed to talk to them. Now, can HR be in the room? Absolutely. But I want to make sure that they get it from the employee's mouth, what they're trying to construe, so we get the most accurate report and...
Absolutely. I mean, the intention would be, I mean, typically on a contract like this, we will have points of contact on their end, on our end as well. They will reach out for information. We'll send it on to the departments and say, look, this is the information that's being requested. If you have any additional notes or details or anything, and we'll just send that across exactly as we receive it. Nice thing about email, we always copy people on it so that they'll know that everything that they've requested to be sent will be sent. And hopefully, as you've received from these other commissions and other departments, if PayPoint is doing as good a job as they've been expected to be doing, they will also be open to further communication if needed.
Mr. Chair, I just, I want to make sure there's no misunderstanding with what I was trying to say. I'm not, I'm not saying that HR is the only person that's going to be talking to these, to these people. I wanted to make sure that if the department heads or the elected officials have a concern that Joe can meet with them, if they don't want to, because it's not part of their flat fee, that Joe can meet with them or Kim can meet with them and get that information back to them, so that they're not spending that hourly time as part of their flat fee. By no means am I trying to restrict anybody from talking to this contractor.
Thanks for that clarification, Chris. Any other, anything else from this board or staff? Is there any public comment?
First of all, at the last meeting, I made a comment that I was hoping that this would be dealt with rapidly, and it has been, and that's greatly appreciated and noted. So thank you very much. I have before me all the material that was attached to the agenda item, which I was, represented to me that all of you had read all this, which I think is fantastic if you have, which is something to be said. Couple of points I want to make, just to sympathize to you, because we have three people up here and another five people in the room who this, who this study would not primarily affect, because we're elected and our salaries are set by the legislature. However, we are concerned for the human beings, the human lives that are affected by how we treat them and how we compensate them for the jobs that they do. And that's part of what this study is, to say, do we appreciate them as much as people do in other places and other counties? And the competition has become extremely, supremely tough, as has been mentioned. And all the factors that have been considered in the past aren't necessarily valid today. For instance, we had a survey done a number of years ago. I think it was approximately 2017 or sometime before that. But one study was done by an outside firm, and the results appeared to be totally off the mark. They just simply did not comply with the reality that existed at that time. And they, we determined that they talked to some departments, didn't talk to others, et cetera, different problems came up. And I know, in talking with Joe, he said, well, it might incur additional costs if you have to talk to department heads about certain things. Well, maybe that's what we ought to do, because we're talking about people's lives and their livelihood. We ought to think about that. We are responsible to the voters. The staff is not. They're responsible to you or us, but we are responsible to the voters, and that includes the people that work for the county. So we have to take this very, very seriously and do it right. And there's some things where people who do studies aren't always conscious of, that they could be made conscious of if, in fact, they would talk and listen to some of the people who are closest to the public. Most of us who are elected have contact from the public every single day about something they are concerned about, appreciate, or want to complain about. So that gives us insight into what is needed to be provided for by the county. And I think I can speak on behalf of the other elected officials here, and the sheriff apologizes, he had to go to a training today that he couldn't miss. But all of the other constitutionally-elected officers are here in the room. We certainly don't have any objection to an outside firm doing a study if there is proper feedback and oversight by the elected officials in the county. Notice, I didn't say all the department heads, and I'm not belittling any of them. They do a great job. But they are responsible to the county manager and eventually to you. But you and the rest of the other elected officials are responsible to the public. So we know how important it is. The bottom line in the county is providing the best possible services to our people so they can live happy, productive lives in Churchill County, and not just to think that somebody's doing a great job with the budget. They want to know that they have a life, they have a secure life, a safe life, and a happy life. And that's the responsibility of the people sitting up here. Now, someone said, well, where do we find the money? Well, unfortunately, I can tell you, that's up to you guys. That's why you guys were elected, to find the money. You can't ask a department head to do that, because we have other jobs we're supposed to be doing. So you guys, that's, you do what you want to, but that's up to you. At the same time, you cannot neglect the fact that we are losing employees to other jurisdictions, because they either seem to be more considerate employees, or they think they have more money, or there's some other factor involved. So the elected officials felt like the last time they did a survey, they might have answered some questions for someone, and they were later totally ignored. They paid no attention to them. And so all of the elected officials, I think, and we've met and talked about it, most of you know about that, we expect to be included in the decision-making process, at least as far as our opinions are concerned. You don't have to do what we say, we're not the boss. But we would appreciate if our opinions were considered in making this process. And if it costs a little more to do that, so be it, because we're speaking on behalf of our employees. We don't have a dog in this fight. It doesn't affect, doesn't affect our salary like it does all the people that work for us. So we'd ask you that you please consider that in going forward with this process. Yes, outside firm is fine. Joe's done a tremendous amount of work on all of this, but we don't want it to slip through the cracks. And unfortunately, I hate to draw this analogy, but the big criticism we have in Washington is it's run by a bureaucracy and not the elected officials. And we certainly don't want to see that here, and I don't think we will. But that's up to you three sitting right there, and up to us as elected officials to give you the proper input that you need in order to do your job. And without that, if we just skip it and say, let staff take care of it, then none of us are doing our jobs. So we need to be an integral part of the process. I've talked to all the elected department heads. They're perfectly willing to participate in any manner that is helpful, but they do want to participate and have a say in how it's done and what conclusions are reached. They don't want someone who's a salaried employee working for you three guys to make a decision that might make the budget look good but hurt the services we provide to the public. And I know that sounds awfully harsh, but I think the public does need to have a voice in this thing, and the best place to hear that is from your elected officials who are elected by the public as well as yourselves. So we have to ask you this. The staff can take care of the details and deal with things and present you with the problems, but just like we have to make decisions, I have to make decisions about cases. I'm the final stop. The clerk has to make decisions about elections. The assessor has to make decisions about values of property. The recorder has to keep the records straight, so we'll know who owns what. It goes on, and the sheriff, of course, has that end of law enforcement. We all have to make the hard choices, and that's what you're having to do now. But it's way past time. There's a tremendous amount of just quiet uneasiness among our employees, because this has not been done sooner. And you need to know that. And they'll all say nice things to you, because you're the big boss, and that's good. They should. But the fact is, we... boss, and that's good, they should. But the fact is, we, we just, we just lost a secretary last week, who went to another job. And somebody stole our chief civil deputy, so he could make money, so more money somewhere else. But that's the reality that we face. Just in my, in my office, we've lost five attorneys to Washoe County alone, five. And we've lost one to Washington State, and one to Utah. And that's because, the number one thing is, every single one of them is making more money. However, Churchill County has a lot to offer. So, we need to do a survey, that not, not, doesn't mean we give away the, the moon. We can't give, we don't have all the money in the world. That's, we know that. But at least we can be reasonable about balancing our priorities of what's important to the people in the county. And people didn't move here so they could be in Disney World. They moved here so they could have a safe environment for their families, to live and work in, and go to sleep at night, and not worry about something bad happening. That's the truth. If they want to go to Disney World, they can move to Las Vegas, or Chicago, or someplace. But here, you're responsible for providing that infrastructure. It provides people safety. And safety in many, and not just law enforcement safety, but safety in the way their taxes are run, there's no corruption in their government, the safety in the way their elections are run, safety in the way the property is taken care of, everything. You're responsible for that. So, I don't mean, I don't mean to lecture to you, but since I'm the oldest guy here, I can do that, me and Harvey. So, please, take this very seriously. Your elected officials are ready to pitch in and help. They're ready to serve on any kind of oversight committee or committee that you need. They don't want to encumber the process. They don't want to make it any more difficult. But they would like to think that you listen to their input, so that they can go back to their staff and say, I'm trying for you, I'm doing the best I can. And then if there's a shortfall or a shortcoming, we can all understand it together. But it has to be transparent. It cannot be, oh, well, the staff decided this, so that's what we'll do. And I know none of you would ever say that, but we heard in Washington all the time. So, please, I'm beseeching you to consider that when you go through this process. Outside companies, fine. Joe did a great job on all this stuff. But consider that when you're going through it. Who do you, who are you really responsible to? You're really responsible to the taxpayers of Churchill County, and the people that work to make this county a better place to live in. So, Lane, did you have anything you want to add on that?
Just briefly, Lane Mills, for the record, chief deputy district attorney, Churchill County. You know, we, obviously, I fully concur with my, my boss. But I, and we also agree with a vast majority of what Joe has talked about in this dynamic, about what we need to look at. And so, we have these three people, these three outside people that we have here. Some of them, I don't know when exactly they got the request for bids or not. But, you know, I've looked at the Elko County salary study. I've looked at the Douglas County salary study, these are two different people. And they are products of what the commissioners asked them for. And so, when you're talking about buying a car, you may be going to want to go out, because you're talking about spending a million to $2 million here. You're probably going to want to go out and actually look at their finished product. Read their study. See if it answers the questions that you think should be answered in those studies. Don't take their word for it, because they might have just asked for a basic, hey, let's do this comparison to every other job thing is out there, and nothing else. And that's what they did, and they were happy with it. And so, that's not exactly what you're looking for. And so, when I read these things, I mean, I don't know what Elko County asked them to do. But I can see their analysis that's in there. And I urge all of you to read that report yourself, and see if it's the kind of analysis that you would be looking for, when you're having to do this job of like saying, yeah, now I can see why these people should get more money, or not. And the same goes for Douglas County. When you read the Douglas County one, and they identified who they looked for, and they also did a more deep-depth analysis of how they go and look at various unfilled positions, and where people jump into the pay range. Is everybody getting hired at step one? Or does everybody get hired at step 10? And that study had that kind of analysis. The one from Elko didn't. Now, that doesn't mean that Elko one is suboptimal. It just might mean that they didn't ask for that. And so, those are some things I would urge you, before you go and select somebody, to then go make a billion, $2 to $ million decision, go look at those things. And base your decision not on these two-page fluff things that, you know, that people put out for these things. Because that's, that's important. And the numbers, obviously, are important. But those are some of the other things. And I would just say that I did talk to an I-County elected official myself. And so, and they were happy, but some of these things were driven by the county commissioners. And the county commissioners directed pro point to include Clark County and Washoe County in their analysis. And so, and that's a you decision of like, who do we include in our analysis? And to know that Nye County, who's like the poorest, poorest county per capita, according to this official, in the state of Nevada, had to choose Clark and Washoe as their comparables, I think tells you something. Because we're in, it's a labor market analysis. It's not a job-to-job analysis, because we're not competing with Lyon County for people. We're not competing with Elko County for people. We're also competing with the private sector. We're competing with Commissioner Blakely, for, you know, secretarial staff. You know, because every other business, it's here in town. I mean, they're also hiring the same people that we want to hire. And so, when you look at the Douglas County one, they also have a private sector analysis. The one that did Washoe County, which is Corey Horn Ferry, they also did a private sector analysis. And so, and that's important, because we're talking about a labor market analysis, and what is the labor market demanding? Because you can look at other jurisdictions like Lyon County, like I would submit, you would never even compare, at least compare their district attorney's office salaries for that, because they have like four, four positions that have been unfilled for years. For years. Which just tells you that they shouldn't even be considered, because they're an outlier. They're not statistically significant. And so, there has to be a lot of thought, I would submit to you, the commissioners, about who we pick, and then how we go about identifying these comparable markets. And if you think you can do that on, like, what's submitted here before you, God bless you. But I think there's a lot to think about there. And, and a lot of direction from the board to these institutions that we're, they're going to pump out whatever you, you tell them to. And that's what they've done in the past. They pumped out whatever we told them to. Sherry's been here, she can tell you that. She's been here just as long as I have. That they, they will pump out whatever you tell them to. And it'll just be a mathematical formula. If you want them to look deeper, you need to give them direction on how to do, look deeper, what kind of analysis to do, what kind of labor market analysis, what do we want to do? Do we want to compare it to just these cities? Do we want to compare it to actually looking at things like in Lyon County and Washoe County, where half their employees work from home? Or they get three-day work weeks, and they're salaried? Or some of these other places, where not only do they get paid, but they have the ability to go work on the side? You know, we look at some of our other, when you're talking lawyers, and I'm a lawyer, they have, they have their salaried job at a county, and then they have the ability to go do two days a week of private practice. And those are things that aren't necessarily measured when you go do this. And that's the kind of detailed analysis that the commission needs to go and give direction to these guys, is like, what kind of deep dive do we want to do? So, thank you.
Thank you, guys. And real quick, too, we want you to be a part of this process. At the end of the day, you guys know your departments, what they do, what their function is, all of your tasks, chores, duties. And so, we, I think, I can't speak for us, but I think we're all in agreeance that we want you a part of this process.
And I, I do, and I did hear, obviously, I wasn't here when the last process happened, but there, I think we paid, if I understand this correctly, we paid to have this done, and then kind of just threw it all out, because it wasn't what we want. And I agree with everything that was said. And I especially agree with, this commission has to be a big part of this, and we need to meet with whoever we select upfront, to get exactly what we want out of this. Because I do not want to pay $53,000 and be disappointed in what we get. And that's on us. So, we, I would like to meet with the, whoever we select on the front end of this, to make sure our expectations are clear, so that they can meet our expectations. And if we feel like they can't, or they feel like they can't, then we need to regroup.
And that's completely an option. I mean, that's in our purview. If we want to select someone today, just kind of express interest and say, hey, will you come to Churchill County? Will you give us a presentation, talk to us? We can have, you know, a public meeting with all the department heads there?
Workshop.
Workshop, yeah, workshop, I guess, wouldn't be a special meeting, be a workshop. But we could workshop it that way as well, so.
Absolutely. I think that's going to be necessary to make this work.
And just from the, the proposal that was complete, the way I understood it, we, the customer, can design the criteria for them to work from. So, I understand Mr. Mills' concern there of making sure we have the right report for Eric County. I think we can take the information that he's talking about, review that, and allow that to help us make a better decision. But then have meetings with the elected officials here, and HR, and the county manager, to make sure that the criteria we set forth is exactly what we want. And, and that's the way I understand their proposal? Am I incorrect there?
I mean, that is my understanding of the proposal. It is a flat fee proposal, and so I'm sure they will have a certain amount of time allocated for this purpose. But I think at this stage, what, what I'm hearing, and I, I would want to do, would be to say, to contact whoever, whether it's one person or multiple, if you have a desire to consider multiple people, to invite them to come and make a presentation to this board, about what their study would include, and what exactly the ability to have your specific desires met is. And then, and if they obviously have a different price associated with making additions, then they could make that known at that time. And that way, we can make a full and upfront decision.
To be quite honest with you, I thought maybe there'd be a representative here from...
One of them.
One of them, or, you know, all of them. And I don't disagree, I agree 100% on this too. We've got to look at the private sector. When you're looking at people that can go make more money than a combination technician, that's in charge of keeping a network running, a very skilled position, and you can make more money being a delivery driver, and that this is totally out of our realm, but it's a comparison that we have to make. Because we're competing, we're, we're competing with the Navy base. We're competing with, and they're not, you know, Chugash, they're private. We're competing with all of those. We're competing with the jobs in TRIC. And, and every county that I talked to is in the same position we're in. They're ahead of us on the, the study. But we just, Eric and I just got here in January, and this is a priority, and we're going to make it work, and we're going to make it happen. So, and this commission's going to put the hours in to make it right. We don't want it, we don't want it to be like last time, from what I hear. And I've spoke to several, so.
Something else we need to consider today, too, is, once we have the finished product, what is our commitment level? Are we going to fully, you know, is that something we need to do today? Is that something we wait till the last minute and do? Do we need to like encourage everyone to prepare, you know, to institute it into their next year's budget? You know, we're, we're doing our job, as we promised we would do our job, to get this accomplished. And we're going to make sure it's correct. So, there's, that's huge, right? We've said that on the record. So, now, we would ask from the departments, you need to sort of be thinking like, okay, we're going to do this. So, you need to start looking at your budgets, and make sure that you've dialed your budget in, to where when you present, we don't have a lot of back and forth, because you won't let go of something that you may or may not need. Well, we only have and will get so much money. So, when it's all said and done, if you won't work with us on those things, then, I mean, there's got to be give and take, right? So, I think we all need, from today forward, even this cycle of budget we're in right now, start, do you really need something? Do you not really need something? Do you spend it? Do you not spend it? And in preparation to institute this, because this is, the employee, the normal employee of Churchill County, is the person who keeps this functioning correctly. More than we would ever know. There are so many employees here that do things, that they do not say a word, that it's really not their job to do. And they don't say a word if they stay 20 minutes late. They just get it done. So, we need to make sure we're in position to, to make this happen. And that's going to take everyone. So, our commitment level, you know, we have to think about that. You know, we're, you know, is that something we decide today? Is that, what do you guys think?
I, I think, Jeff, will you help me out here? I think if we start going into that, it's a little too off-script for the agenda. But that's something that we could include on, on the workshop that we're talking about.
I'd agree with that. I think today, it's, it's agendized just for the approval of an internal or an external study. I mean, there's some wiggle room in there on how that'll look. But as far as commitment levels, what, what the budget's going to look like, those kind of things, I think, would be for another day for another agenda item.
And it also should be noted, too, I mean, you look at the recommended board action on here, and what it says, you know, it's just, we're simply authorizing to actually complete a internal compensation study. No monetary value attached to it. It's just simply expressing interest. Contact these companies, see if they want to come down and have a presentation with us, and go from there. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, I believe the recommended one was if you wanted to approve HR to do it. But there's an alternative one for picking a specific company. You don't have to do that today. Sounds like, based of what I'm hearing from the board, I would say a motion to request any of our external study, I guess, proposers, to come and attend the workshop, if they choose to, to provide additional information, at which point you would be selecting them. And so, essentially, today's decision is, I guess, between the external and the internal study. It sounds like the intention is to move forward with an external study. But either you're, you're welcome to pick any of these today, you're welcome to select one, and say, we want to have a meeting with just them, to go over our expectations, and make sure they can meet those expectations. Or to set it up to say, we want to have, we don't want to select a particular person today, but we want to invite everyone to come and give us a full proposal. My, I mean, my only hesitation with saying, we aren't going to select anyone today, is, we're probably going to get more buy-in from somebody if they believe they sort of have the, have the lead, and they're just coming to make that final proposal, than if they were to say, well, I'm just one of three, we'll, we'll see. But that, again, is up to you.
I think we have a lead person here, just going off of recommendations, people we've talked to, and that'd be payroll.
PayPoint.
PayPoint. So, I think we have the person. So, I think we could, you know, have Joe, direct Joe to contact them, see if they want to come down and give a presentation, listen to our elected officials, listen to us on what we want done, what we want to see, and see what they come back with.
Now, when we say, come in for a workshop, are we going to say, in person? Or is video work?
I think, I think it could be really either one.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, I think it could be either one. I have no problem with, I know some people don't like Zoom and doing stuff over the screen, but I have no problem with it.
Just a comment, if, if we're, if that's the, if that's the path we're going to go down, then we will want to make sure we know exactly what we want to get out of this study, so that if we have someone here doing this presentation, it's, it's almost an, an exchange with, you know, that's a great presentation, this is what we're looking for, we want this, we want this, we want this. So that, when they walk away, people on this side of the table, the dais, and the people on that side of the dais, know exactly what we're going to be getting. to be getting. So there's some prep work that we're going to want to do prior to having them come do the presentation.
Yeah, and if we're having a workshop, I mean, every single department head is going to be doing their homework on what they want, what they want to see, what they want done, what they want out of this. At the end of the day, we're, we're all Churchill County, it's all coming out of one big pot of money of Churchill County. We all need to make sure we're getting what we want out of this, so.
So I will take the comments that the board has made, as well as the public comment that was received, to make sure, sort of put together the list of factors that they wanted to be considered, and we can ship that over to PayPoint when they're considering their presentation, so they're ready to at least give answers to that.
And on the note of public comment, was there any other public comment? Okay. Any other questions?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Denise Felton, Churchill County Assessor, for the record. I just want to, you know, maybe suggest that maybe you don't limit to one, maybe you pick your top two, so that way, maybe if you don't like the answers from one, you have the answers from, you know, maybe one gives a better presentation, so at least you have a choice.
Yeah, we could start off, we could start off with two. I was kind of thinking we had to kind of pick one, just because if they're going to come all the way out here, I don't know where they're actually based.
If they're going to Zoom in, there's no problem.
And there's no problem, yeah.
And if they, and if there's just two of them, and they say, well, we don't want to spend the time doing that, then are they really the ones we've?
Yeah.
We want to deal with anyways.
Any other public comment?
I guess my, if that's cool with me, I would be looking at PayPoint and Baker Tilly.
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed. Okay, with that, can I get a motion for that agenda item, please?
I would move to authorize a external compensation study with the caveat that we will meet with the Baker Tilly and, you said PayPoint, and PayPoint to offer them to give us a workshop proposal.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
On that motion, it also includes a classification as well, right?
Yeah, classification and compensation study.
I'll second the motion, Chairman.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Joe. 7C, consideration of possible action, approval of holiday standby compensation for district attorneys, public defenders, and justices of the peace. Sherry?
Thank you. In the 2025 legislation, the Department of Indigent Defense Services, DIDs, approved to pay for holidays for when the district attorney or the public defenders are covering the holiday for trials for the 48-hour period. And so I'm bringing this before you to change what we've been paying. We've been paying them a flat rate for the weekend, and we're going to split that into a daily rate, so that when a holiday hits, either the Monday or the Friday, that that would be a paid day, and we would go retro back to the July and Labor Day holidays in the current fiscal year, since we just got their form, and their form needs it by per day that they're actually working. So I'm asking you to approve this additional pay, please.
Thank you, Sherry. Any questions or comments from board or staff?
I just want to make sure, right now, they're getting paid so much on Saturday, so much on Sunday, and nothing on a holiday.
They're getting a flat rate for the weekend of $637. What it was, was the DIDs wanted to pay just for one day for $450, and the county was paying, before they started to approve it, they were paying the $400. And then we reduced it because it was not persible in the beginning, and then it's been reduced by pers because they're not covering the pers portion. So this is just splitting it into day rates. So it would just be, the addition would be for the extra day.
So is it divided among the money they're already getting, or they're adding money to it?
They're adding, they're giving us more money to cover the holidays.
Any other questions or comments from board or staff? Is there any public comment?
Just briefly, just to give credit where credit is due, DIDs did not actually put this in their budget. Our good governor wanted to make sure that judges and public defenders and district attorneys get paid for working holidays. And it's not just a Monday or a Friday, when we have something that comes on a Wednesday, Thursday, or Tuesday, whenever it falls, it's one of those days, too. And so, just to give credit where credit is due, this is due to the governor looking out for law enforcement, frankly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? If not, a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the standby compensation for district attorneys, public defenders, and the justices of the peace for working on the weekend and holidays as presented.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. We'll jump to our new business, 8A, consideration of possible action, approval of a settlement, mutual release, and dedication of property agreement between Churchill County and River Homes in Fallon LLC related to property identified as APN 008-293-33 and APN 008-391-44. Who will be taking this? You, Joe?
Sure, I'll go ahead and take this one. Again, Joe Sanford, for the record, almost all of this work was done while I was district, civil district attorney. And so, instead of having Jeff tell you everything that I told him to tell you, it's probably easier if I just set the record. So this is actually a very long story, starting in 2005, when this planned unit development actually originally got started. That was during the height of the development, a full PUD was created. And then, you know, when the crash happened, the developer was unable to continue with the project. That project continued to be extended all the way until 2020. At that time, staff at the county determined that it was really not in the best interest of the county to continue to extend these PUDs on a long-term basis, when those maps were from, actually, from 2005, and the requirements were also from 2005. And so, the PUD on this particular property lapsed at that time. And then, the county had some, I guess, disputes associated with that property, with the homeowner, RHF. And the county also needed a easement across this property. We have a planned bridge extension that is going to go from Moody to Rice. I have a $4 million earmark for that, but the landing space would be on this property. In addition, it would also help with our utility lines and creating a loop for our sewer and water system, or at least our water system, right? Just water. And so, the county sat down with River Homes in Fallon and made several discussions about what to continue to do with this property. The developer has always wanted to develop this property, has maintained their desire to develop this property the entire time. But like I said, we had an issue where the map was very old and was continuing to get further and further out of date. And so, this is a settlement agreement between Churchill County and River Homes in Fallon. It has some obviously contested claims associated with it that are going to be waived here, but the primary terms are this. River Homes in Fallon had dedicated about 10 acres of property to the county in 2005, when they originally did their PUD, along the river corridor for open space. They have asked, and the county would be agreeing, that those same 10 acres would remain in the county's possession, but that we would consider them in the calculation of the density of the property. So the remaining property is about 155 acres, we would consider it 165 for any density calculation purposes. In addition, the county would be receiving an easement across the property from where the bridge landing is expected to be, up to the connector road. It's going to be an 80-foot easement that would allow for the use of the public when that time comes. In return, Churchill County was agreeing to a couple of pieces. First, the property is, would be rezoned to R3 with limitations on the amount of units that could be built. So it's 155 acres. The R3 designation would allow for multifamily and single-family homes. They are proposing 661 total units, with them either, with 361 being multifamily homes, with the remainder being single-family, with the option to make them all single-family homes. Their original proposal had been for all single-family homes, but they want to reserve the rights based under the zoning choice. The zoning itself isn't actually being done today. The agreement would just be that in the next six months, they will be submitting this zoning application. It'll go through the same process as every other zoning application will. There's no binding requirement for any decision by either the planning commission or this board at that time. If the board ultimately denies that zoning, then this settlement agreement would go away. The intent is that this would be a development in line with what they had previously proposed, but by doing it through zoning instead of a PUD, instead of having a defined, specific plan that needs to be re-upped every three to four years, that would be continuing to get out of date, it would just be left as a zoning tool. The county is further agreeing to waive some ONM fees for their connections. This would be over a five-year period, at the total expense of about $125,000. This agreement does lay any claims that they have related to inverse condemnation, which is the taking of their property for this road to rest, and would allow us to continue to build the bridges planned. Happy to answer any questions that you may have. The agreement was ultimately finalized by Mr. Weed, and so if you have any legal questions, please direct them over to him, but I'm happy to give you, answer any questions about the history.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions or comments from board or staff?
Can you explain more on the abatement of the fees, what happens after the five years? Or what's, you know, are they building homes within five years? And the ones they can't build after five years, they're no longer abated?
So the way this will be is, it's a five-year abatement period. If they build a home in the interim, then that home will pay the fees as regular. They'll make a regular connection, they will pay their regular fees. If they don't build a home, it will continue for the five-year period. At the end of the five-year period, they will continue, they will then be assessed the regular fee as they are now.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from board or staff? I did have one, Joe, on that R3, and I'm just looking for clarification here. So it's stated in there about the R3, but at the end of the day, it's going to go back to the normal process. If, for some reason, someone disagrees and it doesn't get approved, then this just nullifies.
That would be correct.
Okay. Is there any public comment?
Thank you. For the record, Harvey Woodmore, on behalf of River Homes. At the outset, I would like to thank former county manager Jim Barbie, present county manager Chris Spross, and obviously, the work of Joe Sanford throughout this process. As he indicated, it was a long negotiation, one that had multiple moving parts. And as you pulled and tugged on one, it created an effect on another. But at the end of the day, we think we have a good product that is both fair for the applicant in terms of, and the owner, in terms of a process that gets us where we need to go. It encourages development with respect to that area, which is in the northwest quadrant, which is where the residential units are planned to go. Joe indicated there was a limitation of 361, the number's 330. That's the only correction I have on the record, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. But again, my purpose here is, today, is to thank the staff and the efforts of a lot of people to put this together for recommendation to you, Mr. Chair. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Last time for public comment. If not, a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the settlement, mutual release, and dedication of property agreements between Churchill County and River Homes in Fallon LLC relating to property identified as APN 008-293-33 and APN 008-391-44.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. 8B, consideration of possible action, approval of the agreement between amendment and reinstatement of real estate purchase and sales agreement between Churchill County and Vertex Fund III LLC for the sale of real property identified as APN 008-301-11 and APN 008-301-12, consisting of 26.21 acres and 5.2 acres respectively, to Vertex Fund III LLC in the amount of $600,000. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I know this is item B, but actually, this item is a combination with some of the remaining items. And so I'm going to talk about all of them together, and ultimately, I'm going to recommend that when you make your decision, you'll be able to make them individually, that you consider the final map portion first, because the rest of the agreement is related on your approval of that. And so if you ultimately choose not to approve the map, then the agreement doesn't make any sense. So this is also a relatively complex history of this property. You may recall, back in February, we had a hearing on, on the termination of this agreement. But I will outline a little bit of the history, just for your benefit. In April of 2022, the county entered into an agreement with Vertex for the development of the Coleman Road property for multifamily housing. Over the next year, the Vertex Group entered into, submitted a tentative map, which ultimately was approved with a full design, and the property was rezoned to R3. Between that time and 2025, we had worked with the Vertex Group, but ultimately had some disputes regarding their ability to complete the project, especially as it related to the structure that our then-agreement had. And specifically, the county had fairly significant ties to the outcome of that property and the full development of it. We had responsibility related to the development of the water and sewer system and providing a reimbursement cost associated with that. We also had some obligations associated with the property in the event that the development did not occur. Based off those concerns, we ultimately weren't able to come to an agreement, and so this board moved to terminate the agreement. Our agreement had a mediation clause associated with it, and so, once notice was given of the intent to terminate, a mediation request was made. Manager Spross and myself met with the Vertex Group at a mediation in early September, and where we discussed a lot of the concerns that the county had, as well as our concerns with moving forward and the ability of the group to complete the project. At that meeting, we had a lot of assurance about the ability of, of the group and the interest of, in finalizing this project and finalizing this map, and had to take a very good discussion about what could, this could look forward to, and what the county could do to extricate any obligations it may have in a beneficial manner. And so, ultimately, we negotiated an agreement, and that is the agreement that's in front of you. I just want to highlight some of the main terms. So the first change is that this is essentially a full sale. So we would be closing in approximately two weeks, and after the conclusion of that closing, the property would go to the Vertex Group with some very limited restrictions. And I guess those restrictions are actually later in your agenda item, but it'd have a reservation of easement from the Coleman Road to the proposed bridge area. A reservation of that easement will exist, so that even if no apartments are built, the county will still have the right to build that road. In addition, there is a grant of easement. The Vertex Group purchased property off-site to create a path to bring utilities to the property. This easement is a grant to the county to allow the county to build those in the event that the Vertex Group chooses not to, or ends up not building this property. And so this will assure the ability of the county to fully loop its system and to benefit its system as needed. Again, it'll be part of this, and so there will be no additional costs associated with that. In return, the county has agreed to give a $200,000 credit against fees for actual vertical construction, hookup fees and impact fees with construction. So in the event that a development does occur... So in the event that a development does occur, those impact fees will be credited up to $200,000 for the construction of infrastructure from off-site to bring water and sewer services to the property. Previously, we had agreed to cover that at 100%, which has an unknown cost to us that was going to be impacted on when this ended up being constructed. And so this $200,000 number is a final number, and we believe it is a beneficial number over what we were previously exposed for. Secondly, we agreed that we would not have any further obligation once the closing is complete to either manage the property or ensure that a construction occurs or have any liability in the event that no construction occurs for any damages to Vertex, which I think is very important because instead of having a concern about the feasibility of the map or any of those types of concerns, we have resolved that, and ultimately, that will be Vertex's issue. And then I think perhaps the most critical element for us in the most recent time is we had previously agreed to sell water to the property, provide water to the property at a rate from 2019. Because we are not sure when they will actually move forward, that provision has been removed. And so ultimately, Vertex will have to acquire either its own water or purchase the water from the county when they are prepared to actually develop. For the purpose of today's meeting, you have before you the final map on the project. That had previously been a substantial concern because we had not been able to get the final map completed in the time that we had originally planned. This final map that is before you today has been reviewed by staff. All of the county's concerns and comments have been made and have been addressed. There are some outstanding issues to have it recorded, so there's some outside agencies that still need to sign off, as well as some of the requirements of the Churchill County Code that will come when someone is prepared to record, specifically the water dedication and the bonding requirements. The purpose of today's motion is for the county to approve it. Vertex will be able to record that map once they meet all of those conditions. They're all conditions set out in the county code. There's no special conditions or special waivers of conditions associated with it. It is just the standard county code terms. They will be able to do that anytime within four years of their tentative map recording date. And unfortunately, I can't remember the exact date, but it was, I believe, March of 2023, so this would be March of 2027. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. For the purpose of today, we have reviewed all of the materials, and so the first motion, I believe, should be related to the approval of the map.
Which is out of me?
Me, yes.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Joe?
Out of those items, there on out of me, I actually, it says in the agenda report that the, that the cemental materials are vague for the park site, and staff has made recommendations to go with the approval. So is these recommendations, have they been agreed to? Like if we approve the map, is those recommendations being approved also? Are they still not going to be approved?
I didn't follow the question fully, so maybe you could restate it for me.
All right. Let me pull it up here. If I can find, I don't know how deep it is. It says in there about the parks, the part of the parks where it says that the agenda report, in the agenda report, it says the submitted materials are vague for the park site, and the staff has made recommendations. So if we approve this, does the recommendations go with the approval? I was trying to find it.
Are you talking about the 20%? 20% of the site must be landscaped open space. The cemental appears to meet the standard, although some cemental materials use the wrong calculation in the table.
No. I guess I should have.
Joe, this, Chris, is this the outtake structure that was talked about a long time ago up along the river? Or no?
I'm considering whether this may have been from the tentative map that has now actually been addressed in the final map.
So it's going to be on the third page of the agenda report and the new paragraph there. It says the, there's been discussion between the applicant and the county regarding Pacific facilities to be included in the park site. However, the cemental materials are somewhat vague. Staff recommends the following Pacific items for clear expectations of the constructed facility, A and B and C and D and F. It's right before the paragraph of traffic and access. And Chris, you are correct, it's part of the County River Takeout Park.
Yes, so Randy Hines for the record. This is, these were all, in the agenda report, we took information from the tentative map. All those, everything that was from the tentative map has been included into the improvement plans and the final map. So again, this was, this was just background data in the agenda report for the tentative map.
So these comments have been addressed, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that, guys.
Any other questions or comments? Is there any public comment?
Stephen Tuck is a representative of Vertex Fund III. I just wanted to make it clear, it has always been our intent to move forward, and it's difficult to distill into a brief statement the amount of moving parts that go into this development, and not the least of which is the financing. And we need the opportunity to tell this story. To Commissioner Hyde's point, Fallon is a place you have to want to live, and we've spent a lot of money and taken the risk because we believe in this community. We want this to move forward, but we have not yet had the opportunity to sit down with our financiers because underwriting will not look at this without an approved final map. We felt like we were at the one-yard line, and now we're here, right? So if we can get this approved today, we are one step closer to getting what everybody here is looking for, which is more housing that is affordable in a community that needs it. And that is our goal, and I want to make that as clear as possible, that our intent and our ability has not changed. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Any other public comment? If there's no other questions, I'll entertain motion. And again, this will be E.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion on new business E. Motion to approve the final subdivision map for the Riverstone Apartments on a parcel number 008-301-11 and 008-301-12, subject to conditions as listed in the agenda report and the staff report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Jump back to B. Is that the best route?
Yes, back to B. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll jump back to B now. I won't reread that for us here, but any other information you want to add on that?
No, this is, this is essentially the actual agreement that does the settlement that we had talked about. It is an amendment of our prior existing agreement. Most of the terms remain the same. We are expected to close in approximately 15 days, so it will be at the end of this month or the very beginning of the next. All of the terms have been outlined. There are deeds that are going to be considered next in items C and D to effectuate the reservation for the county's portion, and that is everything needed.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board or staff?
I just had one more question I forgot to ask earlier. The $200,000 impact fees, does that go with the property or does it go with the customer or the customer?
It will go with the property to whom, if they end up signing this agreement to somebody else, it will go, but only with this property. They can't say, I'm assigning my credit to some other property.
Okay, so it stays with the property until it's zero?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Any public comment? If none, a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the amendment and reinstatement of real estate purchase and sale agreement between Churchill County and Vertex Fund III LLC for the sale of real property identified as APN 008-301-11 and APN 008-301-12 to Vertex Fund III LLC in the amount of $600,000.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. 8C, consideration of possible action, approval of an easement agreement between Churchill County and Vertex Fund III LLC to grant access easement and utility easement to Churchill County for the properties identified as APN 008-301-11 and APN 008-301-12. Any other information? We're good to go. Any questions or comments from board or staff? Is there any public comment? If none, a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the easement agreement between Churchill County and Vertex Fund III LLC to grant an access easement and utility easement to Churchill County for the properties identified as APN 008-301-11 and APN 008-301-12.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. 8D, consideration of possible action, approval of an easement agreement between Churchill County and Churchill Village LLC to grant an access easement and utility easement to Churchill County for the property identified as APN 010-611-53. And this is that Verona Drive property?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board or staff?
That's where the water is, right? That's where the water is.
Yeah. Shorter route than going all the way back down to Coleman. Any other public comment? If none, a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the easement agreement between Churchill County and Churchill Village LLC to grant an access easement and utility easement to Churchill County for the property identified as APN 010-611-53.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Did anyone want to pull anything off the consent items? If none, a motion to approve those, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. 10, does anyone have anything they want to consider for a future agenda item?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to get everybody thinking about maybe all the other elected officials coming before this board on a quarterly basis and just giving us an update of their office and what they're doing, and if they're having troubles or if they're getting ready to experience troubles or something, just a brief summary of what they're doing. I know that county manager, I think, has started a process meeting with them also. I know it might be redundant, but I think it would be good for the public to know what they're doing as well. So it's something to think about. I mean, we don't make no decisions on it today, but everybody start to think about it and see what you think.
You can definitely toss that idea around. Anything else anyone wants to consider? Okay, we'll go to Commissioner and Management and Staff Reports. We'll start with you, Commissioner Hyde.
I'll save it for next time.
Okay, Commissioner Blakely?
I had a fire board meeting, and that was it.
Okay. I had a CNRWA meeting as well as an RTC meeting this morning. Sherri?
I have nothing, thank you.
Jeff?
Nothing, thank you.
Chris?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Linda?
Well, I'm going to add something. I'm happy and I'm thankful that we got two new employees, and I should be fully staffed by the end of the month.
Awesome.
And I did have a chance to meet them, and I heard their good things, so let's keep them.
I know, they are amazing, so.
Pam?
I do have something. I want you to look at your calendars for January because our regular meeting on the first is a holiday. Statutes say we would roll over into Friday, January 2nd, but would you guys like to go into the following week? You know, people might still be traveling for holidays or something there, so I do have buy-in from Gary for Highway Commission to move it to the next week. I'm still waiting to hear back from Shelley and Mark, but if you guys want to do that and you could look at your calendars now and we could pick a date, then I could get everything scheduled.
I will be out of the country until the 19th, so whatever you guys decide is, will work for me.
I would really like to move it not on a Friday, right after the first, but I'm good with the Friday if that's what's decided.
Yeah, next week, the next week is good for me, the 5th through the 8th, whatever.
Yeah.
I mean, since it's a holiday weekend, should we maybe shoot for the 6th? Just because it gives everybody a Monday to get caught back up?
I prefer that, too.
I'm good with that.
Actually, you have a input on that? Whatever you guys decide.
Okay. And I'll coordinate with CCCom as well. If that doesn't work, I'll pick one of those other dates, and I'll send a notice out to everybody.
Yeah, if it works great. Thanks, Pam, for reminding us.
Thank you, Pam. Joe, do you have anything?
I have nothing other than I'm glad I have at least 400 hours of time back for other work.
Denise?
Denise Felton, Churchill County Assessor, for the record. My staff is on schedule to finish our reappraisal areas. Then we'll be doing a new construction sweep so we can get our assessment notices out in December. We will, we're finishing up the unsecured declarations so we can bill usually around the first part of December when we get our transmittals, our mining transmittals from the state.
Tasha?
Tasha Hesse, Churchill County Recorder, for the record. I have nothing new to report at this time.
Thank you. Randy?
Just briefly, Linda did hire some wonderful people.
Very good. Okay, claims and payroll are going around as we speak. At this time, is there any public comment? Okay, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
We can only do...